I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that our district clerk leads us in the pledge, please.
Pledge: I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral conduct.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. May I have a motion, please, that the agenda of June 17th, 2014 be approved as submitted? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor, seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. May I have a motion, please, that the board approve the consent agenda listed in your Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor, seven in favor, none opposed. Now, part of this consent agenda, we have many tenure recommendations that were just approved, and we are going to recognize those people in just a little bit of time, but we now move on to special reports. Dr. Grimm?
Okay, I'm gonna hand it over to my assistant superintendent for instruction, Jim Pfeifer.
Thank you, Dr. Grimm. It's my pleasure to present to you the CD, the selections for our Arts and Education Permanent Art Collection. And I want to take this moment to thank Kate, who is here with us from Family First Federal Credit Union, standing in the back waving. We have a great partnership with Family First. They support the Arts and Ed program on an annual basis by taking care of the cost for the framing of the artworks that the students have created. And we're also looking at another reception. We're gonna be getting together to potentially plan a fall reception for the unveiling of the artworks at Family First Federal Credit Union where the works will be on display for the next year. So, thank you very much to Kate and her partner in crime Roger for their support in continuing our great partnership. The Arts and Ed program is really an outstanding program that not only supports the visual arts such as you see here tonight, but it also supports cultural experiences for our students in the forms of artists, musicians, and field trips throughout the school year. So, it's a great program, and we greatly appreciate the work of the committee members in supporting the program, all the teachers and administrators who are involved in making sure that the program goes off without a hitch. At this time, I'd like to introduce the principal of Cobles Elementary School, Mr. Don Bavis, and ask him to come up and introduce the first student's artist.
Ah, great. Hello, everyone. It's my great pleasure tonight, I think I'm doing this over here, can everyone hear me? All right. To introduce the winner from Cobles, and if she could please join me over here, Elizabeth Carrilla. Elizabeth is a fifth grade student at Cobles. Her teacher, Mrs. Strife, says that Elizabeth is a consistently hard worker, values learning. She always brings a unique perspective to classroom discussions. She is caring, helpful, and incredibly creative. Elizabeth likes doing art, especially drawing and painting. She was inspired to draw her picture of the birds from her love of animals. Hers is this one right here, the yellow birds. She especially likes seals, toucans, and ducks. She has a vast stuffed animal collection. For this project, students were learning about monochromatic color and how it can affect the mood of a painting. Elizabeth used a small portion of a photograph as a resource for her drawing. She had to draw an image, choose a color, yellow, and use only yellow plus black or white to paint the entire picture. She did a great job on her color mixing and composition, and I offer mine, congratulations to her.
Stop.
Congratulations, Elizabeth, and now the Harris Hill art teacher, Mr. Mike Robison.
Very good. I'd like to introduce Chloe Chen, our Harris Hill artist, who has won the district art award from Harris Hill Elementary School. I'm Mike Robison, the Harris Hill art teacher. Chloe here is a first grader at Harris Hill. Her teacher, Mrs. Leaky, says Chloe is a very hard-working, friendly student who is often a role model for others. When asked what her favorite things to do in school are, Chloe replied, "My favorite subject is math." When she brings math homework back from school, back to school, it often shows that she has gone above and beyond expectations. Chloe also says she likes to learn a lot, help out others, gets energy from playing and exercising, and at home Chloe enjoys reading, swimming, drawing, and her mom says she never lacks for ideas when she comes to drawing. As an artist, Chloe brings a special energy. She is always ready to show and share her joyful imagination. This is her work. Chloe's artwork selected for the district collection is an example of crayon resist. It demonstrates the effective use of fluorescent crayon, dark watercolor, to not only emphasize her bright patterns, but it fully expresses Chloe's wonderful personal vision. Her subject, can't see from a distance, you have to get up close, her subject is a dragon in the dark, in which she is happily riding her dragon, both wearing flowery hats while the bird and pumpkin look on. The bright colors, pattern variety, the careful craftsmanship, and a great expressiveness of the characters make this a dynamic and delightful work of art. Congratulations, Chloe.
And now, I believe, we have Molly Hickey and Allison Palmer from Indian Landing, and they are the Arts and Education coordinators from Indian Landing School.
We have Francesca Wadi with us. Will you come up, Francesca?
And Francesca is a second grader at Indian Landing, and she created this beautiful mosaic painting. She did so with the help of our school art teacher, Mrs. Peterson, and she painted, cut, and pasted this lovely sunset scene. Francesca is in Mrs. Guarino's second grade class. She has two older sisters, Sophia and Isabella, and she enjoys drawing and doing art projects. In her free time, Francesca enjoys reading, especially her favorite book, The Rough-Faced Girl. She loves ice cream and pasta and is looking forward to summer and third grade. Congratulations.
And now Melissa Cox, art teacher at Scribner Elementary.
Nicholas can come up here, and his artwork is right here. And this is Mr. Herschler, our principal at Scribner Road. So, before I started, I went to Mrs. Moon, and I asked her to write down some notes about Nicholas, and I think it's so sweet what she said about him, which is all very true. So, let me read you what Mrs. Moon said. She said, "Nicholas is a great kid to have in class. He's got all the qualities a teacher wants in a student. Well behaved, follows directions, role model for his peers, the list goes on, but he's also in possession of other attributes that make you love him all the more. A little pout on his freckly face when I've asked him to do something he'd rather not. A sprint out the door to get to the teacher's room who lets him play a play ball before her lesson." Do you know what she's talking about there? Oh, I'll have to ask her. "A sheepish expression when he thinks he's disappointed me." By the way, he never disappoints me. So, I am absolutely thrilled that Nicholas's artwork has been chosen to be on display this year. He deserves this honor for so much more than his obvious artistic ability. He deserves it because he's awesome. I just wish everyone could get to know this artist behind the art. So, transitioning into the artwork. For the artwork, this was done in art class, and we investigated the rainforest, and we discussed conservation and how these animals were very rare and very beautiful. Hold on. I gotta flip my page here. Many words were discussed. Emphasis. Where is the place where your eye goes to first? So, when we look at this, it goes right to the bird. And space and overlap, we're also focused on how the branches overlap one another, which shows you deeper space. And Nicholas did both concepts really well, really very well. He included a blue jay as his main image, which was very unique and drawn like a pro. He used a crayon resist where crayon was used, and then a fluorescent paint was placed over the top. And then, to enhance that idea of space, we added tissue for the flowers to have it sort of coming out towards you as well. Nicholas is always a very active and enthusiastic learner, and we are all so very proud of him. Well deserved, and congratulations, Nicholas.
And now, principal of Bay Trail Middle School, Mr. Winston Buddington.
We have two students from Bay Trail. The first is Elizabeth Yorco. Let me see. I'll tell you about Elizabeth's artwork here. Her project is a shape study as well as a color study that was completed using marker. Her art teacher's Kathy Simmons at Bay Trail. The first panel of the project focuses on organic shapes using primary colors. The middle is comprised of inorganic shapes using complementary colors, and the third panel is combination of shapes and analogous colors. Elizabeth is a Bay Trail eighth grader. She swims on the Penfield Modified Swim Team, and also for the sea dragons. She enjoys playing percussion in the band as well. And our second student is Mary Quinmore. Is Mary, okay, must be busy tonight. Mary's a student of Brian Garza, and this is how she explained the process of her artwork here. "First, I picked a picture and sized it so that it would fit certain dimensions. I transferred it to a small paper square. The original drawing was based off a photo of a lion, but it looks more like a tiger as a finished product. I traced over the square with a pen and rubbed the image onto the linoleum block. Then I carved the image into the block. To do the actual print part, I experimented first with a couple different colors and then decided to try to blend pink and black. So, I squirted the pink and black next to each other and rolled them out together until they made a nice blend, and then rolled the color out into the print." Mary's an eighth grader at Bay Trail. She has three other siblings, all younger, who drive her crazy at home, yet she somehow still finds time to find something to love in each of them. She's a swimmer and tends to spend most of her time going to practice, and in the spring she runs track. In the future, she hopes to become a scientist or maybe an astronomer of some sort. If she has free time, she likes to read books, listen to music, draw, paint, and sketch in her room. She hopes to one day travel around the world and make it to the Olympics in one of her swimming events.
And now, Dr. Tom Putnam, principal of Penfield High School.
We have two students. I don't believe they're here tonight, but is Julia Betts here or Grace Flannery? Oh, good. Usually when we do this event, it's Regents Week at the high school, so I have the students home studying for their exams, so I'm very glad. And I also point out that while I'm here, we have one of our amazing art teachers, who is a teacher to both students, Anna Sprague in the audience, but Anna, you can stand up, but. Anna's getting an award for years of service, so I said I would stand in here and not make her work tonight, because she's here to be celebrated, so. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with Grace, who's up here with us, and Grace is currently a senior at PHS. She's taken Ceramics I and II, Drawing, Painting, Studio and Art, Photography, Sculpture, and Portfolio Prep. She's inspired by horses, color, and working intuitively with materials and processes. Grace will be attending, is it Goucher? Goucher College in Maryland in the fall and is undecided on her major. Interest for her future career include art, business, psychology, and sociology. And the artwork is entitled Shell. It's a sculpture from copper, gut, and ink, and the sea sculpture began as a study of primary and secondary contour lines of an actual seashell. And this is in her words, "I was inspired by the colors and design of the seashell and the..." I gotta turn the page. "...contrast between the jagged edges and smooth curves of the form. I decided to use ink to color the gut attached to the wire structure to mimic the original shell's structure, yet took liberty with the intensity of the original hues." And so, if we could get a round of applause for just incredible artwork. Mr. Herschler would like to buy this, so if you want to talk to him afterwards, he pays big. Our second piece that we have up here is Julia Betts. And Julie is currently a junior at PHS. She spends a large percentage of her school day in jewelry metal studio. Her work pushes content to be both personal and insightful and reflects her experiences with international travel and literature. She has taken studio art, photography, jewelry, advanced jewelry, is vice president of the PHS Jewelry Club, and will be taking independent study in jewelry and metals next school year at PHS. Julie plans on studying creative writing and minoring in jewelry metal smithing. Her top choices for college are NYU and SUNY New Paltz. And her artwork was built intending to hold the idea that humans are all connected. "From traveling to Europe throughout the years of my youth," in her words, "I pulled unique aspects of cultures from places like Italy, Turkey, Norway, France, and many more, and brought them all together through the construction of my piece. Despite how filled the world is with war and terror, I saw that each country had an individualized style of art and was inspired by this. The complex yet minimal designs of both the Roman columns and Turkish mosques were the basis for the exterior. When lifting the lid, the interior holds another cylinder designed to look like a museum. Placed upon the walls, all three separate paintings by Vincent van Gogh, Edvard Munch, and Claude Monet, being my three favorite artists and having fond memories of seeing their work scattered between the many museums, this piece was almost a tribute to the influence on my life and art. Lastly, I made a ring constructed out of barbed wire. I used the five-petal design of a flower on the mosque-inspired lid and formed three petals to show how violence in the world deteriorates culture." And so, just a round of applause for both of our Penfords.
I'd like to congratulate all of our student artists who had their work selected to be part of our permanent art collection. If we could please have another round of applause. Outstanding work. Thank you very much. Huge thank you to the student artists for sharing their work with the district as well as with the community as it's on display at Family First. I'd also like to again thank Kate Haywood and Roger Haskins from Family First Federal Credit Union for their continued support and partnership. It's without them, this type of ceremony really wouldn't be possible without having the work framed. I'd like to thank Mrs. Barrett, Mrs. Bradstreet, and Mr. Sedoti and his team for their assistance in tonight's presentation, and certainly the members of the Arts and Education Committee for their time and effort in ensuring the success of the program, especially to my assistant Marilyn Moyes for all of her work in organizing the logistics of the program throughout the year. So, thank you to everybody. At this time, I'd like to invite the student artists to join Mrs. Bradstreet in the hallway for a group photograph with their works of art. Thank you very much.
We now move on to the next portion of our celebrations, and it is the recognition of tenure candidates and staff benchmark, and everything has been organized by our assistant superintendent for personnel, Patty Gallagher. I'd like to ask that the board and Dr. Grimm join me in front of the table so that we can recognize everyone properly and give you our, either a certificate or one of our token of appreciation for your years of service. All right, and we will start with our tenure recommendations. So, when I call your name, if you could please come up here, and I apologize in advance for any last name or first name that I'm gonna mess up. Sarah Basken. Unable to attend this evening and also getting tenure are Kathleen Combs, Michelle Landon, Jennifer Layton, Stephen Newman, Jenny Soleil, Kimberly Osselman. And we now move on to our 15 years of service celebration. Not attending this evening but also celebrating 15 years of service are Ellen Bleeker, William Braisner, Vitaly Butz, Sally Ellersick, Patricia Ferrara, Mary Fiano, Julie Harney, Jill Kotlarczyk, Lynn LaFountain, Janice Lewis, Bonnie McLean, Joanne McBride, Sheila Streibling, Frank Messina, Ann Ponzi, Robert Ruane, Jane Suresky, Carol Shombloom, Patricia Schlossenberg, Valeska Smith, Lori Speck, Connie Wojcik, Erin Wade, David Weisberg, Anne Zaler, Mary And we now move on to our people who are celebrating 20 years of service for the district. Again, thank you for your service. Colleen Krog. Colleen Krog. Sharon Leora. Deb Nelson. Elizabeth Worth. Carrie Young. Not attending this evening and being recognized for 20 years of service are Beth Catalfo, James Hahn, Deb Mack, Shannon Meegan, Colleen Regelsberger, Paul Roberts, Frederick Root, Kathleen Strickland, Vasili Svintozelski, Mark Vogt. Well, I'd like to call, to come up to the front, Mr. Bob Ruane, who is here and being recognized for 15 years of service. Now, 25 years of service, Marcia Barrett. Joyce Beiswenger. John Hall. Randy Hartman. Pamela Howey. Kathleen Stoll. Being recognized for 25 years, Lynn Bon Durant, Gwenda Buckman, Patricia Dwyer, Thomas Fuller, Maureen Guarino, Roxanne Lachansky, Jane Richards, and Michael Robison. And now we'd like to recognize for 30 years of service, Walter Dell. Being recognized for 30 years is Cynthia Andrews, Randall Nellist, and Lorraine Rhodas. Recognizing 35 years of service, Jim Dozier. Unable to join us this evening but being recognized for 40 years of service is Janet Goodnow. Okay, another special messenger, recognizing for 35 years of service, Lisa Mooney.
Wow, every, every year this list is, you know, every year I think, okay, we've recognized so many, next year's list is gonna be smaller, and it just doesn't work. You know, and that, that is great. In the past, you know, several months, we've had so many opportunities to attend concerts, to attend student celebrations, to be at the different schools, and we just, all year long, we're getting reports about everything that is happening with our students. And we just want to thank you for all that you do for them, because in one way or another, you have touched their lives, you have affected their education, and we just cannot thank you enough. And that's why, you know, you are such a good part of Penfield, and that's what makes us Penfield, so thank you.
At this time, I'd like to recognize our student representative, Gwen. When you've been with us for two years, we've had the pleasure of getting to know you through your brief reports, through everything, all your activities that you're doing at Penfield High School, your involvement in so many leadership positions, and, you know, your presence at senior convocation the other night, we're just very proud of you, very proud to know that you will be going to Princeton, congratulations again, and they'd better be ready because we're sending them one of our bests. So, thank you so much for your service, for representing our students so well, and on behalf of the board and the school district, we have a little souvenir for you. We now move on to our board member recognition. Karen. You know, I wrote my little card to keep my ideas together, but I'm just looking and I'm like, okay, where do I even start? And Karen, you've been with us for 15 years, you've represented people in this district, parents, teachers, community members, students, for 15 years, and as John put it in his email this weekend, about 1,000 meetings. When we look at this and people ask, well, so how much work is board member, you know, being on the board, we're gonna tell them, just go talk to Karen. Now, 15 years, that's quite an impact you've had on this district. You've served on various committees, policy, audit, class size, technology, facilities, to name a few. You've been our vice president for two years and chair of labor relations at Monroe County School Board, so your involvement even went, you know, beyond Penfield. You were involved in several capital projects, in changes in curriculum, you survived the mass wars, saw the implementation of full day K, and in all your years, you advocated for students, teachers, and families. If there's one characteristic that we can say about you, Karen, I think it is the passion in your beliefs, definitely. And, you know, you're a huge supporter of Penfield, and this support even helped, you know, was here, and we could see it, even after your daughter graduated. So while you juggled your professional life, raising two beautiful daughters, and everything else that you are involved in, you know, we hear about your vacations and all, you know, your friends and everything that you do, you also, you know, worked here for 15 years on the board. So on behalf of this community and on behalf of the board, we want to thank you for your service. So Karen, you got two presents, not one, because one of them is from Monroe County School Board, they recognize outgoing board members at their annual meeting, and since you could not make it, they sent you their little token.
And my kids, this is their first board meeting, my last, they're the ones that have endured most of the brunt of this, I think, so thank you so much, girls, and thank you everyone for your support, I appreciate it.
Okay, we now end our festivities. Treasurer's Report. Attached to your packet is the Treasurer's Report for the month ending April 30th, 2014. May I have a motion, please, that the Treasurer's Report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school launch fund cash report, and school launch fund revenue and expense budget report, for the month ending April 30th, 2014, be approved and submitted. Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Six in favor? One disappearance? All right, and now is visitor speaking time. We do not have any indication that someone wanted to address the board? Yeah, too late to vote, Mrs. Rutan. So we move on to Gwen for your last report for us. Good evening.
All right, so yesterday for the high school was the last day of classes, which was all festivities and kind of not festivities, because this week is Regents Week, so a lot of classes are preparing for the Regents. I actually have one Friday, sadly, I have one Friday. As for that, some small things, summer work is now being distributed, and I know that I saw a little announcement there, even like summer work sessions or like meetings for incoming ninth graders who are taking pre-AP, which is really good, I don't think I had that when I was a freshman, I was kind of jealous because that sounded nice, because you get to meet with the teachers and like ask questions and go over some of the work in the book and stuff like that, I feel like I was just handed it and be like, do it. I know the vocal music teacher, Ms. Abrahamian, she has been named a quarter finalist for the 2015 Music Educator Award, and that is given out by the Recording Academy and the Grammy Foundation, so I think she finds out whether she moves on in September, but she's a quarter finalist right now, it's been a really long process. And Mr. Weiner was telling me the, the other day to mention that one of his past students, who I think is graduating from Cornell this year, who is a Penfield student, received some of like the highest honors as a Cornell science student, like she graduated top of her class, and he was really proud of that because she was, you know, come from a public school and was competing against all these Cornell students who are, you know, a lot of private educated, wealthy families who have had like all the best opportunities, and she beat them out in the Cornell class, so he wanted me to mention that. So that's all I have.
Barb?
Just to add to that, Gwen, because I know for a fact that along with this wonderful student, and I am looking up her name because I did get the text from Mr. Weiner's wife, that because of this award, he was awarded, or Penfield was awarded money in his name, so somewhere it's gonna be coming, I think it's $5,000. Yeah, maybe it's to Karen, but he is very, he was very humbled by this, but he also should be honored as winning this award.
All right, well, thank you, Barb, we always like to hear that we're being awarded money, so that doesn't happen often. That's it. Any questions or comments for Gwen? Yes, Catherine?
I just want to wish you good luck in your future endeavors, congratulations on Princeton, thank you for everything you've done the past two years, and it's been a pleasure getting to know you.
Thanks, thanks for letting me sit for two years, I heartily enjoyed it.
Hardly or hard?
Hardly. I can, I can now say that I, I can talk about the budget and everything about it to my fellow students because they have no idea what's going on.
Well, that's good, yes, Barb?
Her name is Caitlin Bowen, and she was top in her biomedical engineering class.
Oh my gosh.
And she, out of the 4,000 graduates, the top 1% are Murrell scholars, and this is a Murrell scholarship, so.
Thank you, Barb. Any other questions or comments for Gwen? All right, thank you, you will be missed. And we now move on to our superintendent's reports, Dr. Grimm.
Okay, what we've got here, the Business First has released their guide, and we were ranked, and we've got our four elementary schools in the top 20, we had Bay Trail as third, out of all of the schools, we have the high school as fifth. Overall, the district ranked fourth out of 67 area districts, congratulations to our faculty, staff, and students, and families for their outstanding work. And at Cobble's Elementary School, the students participated in the Jump Rope for Heart, and the families raised $14,000, that's $14,000 in a single elementary school, for the American Heart Association through their annual Jump Rope for Heart campaign. The students will be completing their jumping this Thursday, June 19th. There was a Bike-A-Thon at Harris Hill Elementary School, kindergarten students raised $1,000 for the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children during their recent Bike-A-Thon, and I remember it was very memorable, with Mark Nelson and other staff from Harris Hill riding the bikes over 100,000, 100 miles, right? I remember Mark training for that, what a great principal to be leading the charge on that. Music award, Gwen mentioned this, our high school music teacher, Diane Abrahamian, has been named a quarter finalist for the Music Educator Award to be given out by the Recording Academy at the Grammy Foundation. She's one of 222 quarter finalists selected from more than 7,000 nominations made across the country. Semifinalists will be announced in September, and then 10 finalists will be selected. One winner will be chosen to receive the award during Grammy's Week in January, as well as a $10,000 honorarium and a matching grant for his or her school, and I believe this is a repeat nomination for Diane. A spring sports celebration, a few slides honoring the accolades on the field, and in this case, scholar athletic teams in the classroom. this case, scholar athletic teams in the classroom. The baseball team had a 90.552 average, and golf, boys' golf, 91.510. Lacrosse team, boys, 93.285. The girls' lacrosse team, 95.186. Softball team, 93.573. The boys' tennis team, 90.638. The boys' track team, 95.576, and the girls' track team, 96.396. In terms of athletic accolades, boys' lacrosse and girls' lacrosse were divisional champs, and J.J. Shembry was awarded Section 5 Coach of the Year for Boys' Lacrosse. And with our state track competition, Katie Limbo finished third place at the state and federation in both her races, the 1500 and the 3000, and Harper Stewart took second in the state and sixth in the federation for the pentathlon. Abby Frank finished ninth in the state and 12th in the federation in the 100 meter. Some other spring sports accomplishments, athletic end-of-the-year awards. The Hickok Memorial Sportsmanship Award went to Alexandra Dudek and Spencer Stokes. The Elmer F. Peck Award for the Most Improved Athlete of the Year went to Sandra Catanzaro and Philip DiFrancesco. The Most Valuable Athlete of the Year, Katie Limbo and Derek Swarthout. And the Margaret Libby Memorial Outstanding Coach of the Year, Kyle Jackson. Now Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Jim Pfeifer, will give us an update on the math acceleration. I want to give praise for the administrators and Jim, and the teachers at Bay Trail for all of their hard work in really having an inclusive process with parents, with students, and just looking at this situation with intelligence and character and with the best interest of students in mind. So thank you for all of your work, and Jim, give us that update.
Thank you, Dr. Grimm. I have a brief amount of time, so we'll move through it quickly. Just to remind the board and the public of the timeline here, on May 6, we presented a recommendation to the Board of Education regarding an adjustment. At that time, we were talking about a suspension of the double-accelerated math programs at Bay Trail Elementary School. Following that meeting on June 5, we provided a presentation to families and parents of students at Bay Trail. It was very well attended, with about 60 or more parents attending, along with a couple of our board members, and we had really a great cross-section of the entire district, not just Bay Trail parents, but parents who had kids in high school, middle school, and elementary school. The feedback we got at that meeting was outstanding, a lot of great parent input, and along with that, I think parents were very appreciative of the opportunity to speak with us and share their concerns and ideas with us about the Bay Trail Math Acceleration Program. On June 10, myself, Mr. Buddington, Dr. Maloney, Dr. Grimm met again, along with Mrs. Harrigan, to sit down and review that feedback and look at how we could adjust our recommendation to meet the needs that the parents expressed to us and the concerns that they had with our recommendation. And then on June 12 and 13, Mr. Buddington met with the 6th and 7th grade accelerated students to gather more input from the students themselves and share with them how we plan to move forward as a district in meeting their needs, and got some great feedback from the students. On June 16, actually, that should say, the letters went home to, no, I'm sorry, it was June 13, the letters went home via Connect Ed to parents that updated them on how we would be moving forward. Today, actually, we met with the Bay Trail Math Department to get more feedback from the teachers and make sure they were all up to speed and that we were all on the same page. And then on June 19, we will have another parent meeting at Bay Trail, really dividing it up by sections of parents of children who are entering 8th grade, entering 7th grade, and then elementary parents and parents of students entering 6th grade, so that we can answer any specific questions they may still have after receiving those letters. So a full cycle of communication there. To bring the board up to speed on how we've made adjustments to that initial recommendation quickly, for the 1415 school year, so next school year, any student who is currently in algebra as a 7th grader, most of them will be moving on to geometry as an 8th grader. So that form of double acceleration will still be available for those students next year. I believe we may have a few who may decide to, in some way, shape, or form, take algebra again, but most of them will be going on to geometry as 8th graders. Our current 6th graders who are accelerated, they will be taking an assessment in the next couple of days to determine where they are in terms of the 7th grade standards and the 8th grade standards, and that information, as we talked about at the parent meeting, will be used to develop the program for Math 7-8 for next year. So most of those students will be going on in 7th grade to a Math 7-8 program, based on the results of those assessments. Others will be just moving into Math 7. Also, based on the results of that assessment, if students demonstrate a very high level of proficiency on those 7th grade standards and 8th grade standards that we have not yet taught, there will be conversations with those parents on how to best program for those students as 7th graders, and really looking future forward. If those students are ready to take algebra as 7th graders, then we will work to find a way to provide that. That may be, depending on the number of students, looking at scheduling them into 8th grade Algebra 1 classes, or if there's a larger number of students, we may look to schedule a full section or a section, I won't say that it'll be a full section, but we'll look to schedule a section of Algebra 7 again, and then that would follow up with the following year in 1516, a section of Algebra or Geometry in 8th grade. So really, the recommendation has changed more of a suspension of double acceleration to really a modification as to how the program will be implemented. Okay, so we were talking about the grouping for the 1415 school year, and there'll be an assessment that the 6th graders will take again at the end of the 6th grade year to determine their readiness for Math 7-8, and those results will be used, one, to program, and also if students demonstrate a high level of proficiency, then we'll look to program for those students, possibly Algebra 7, and then moving on to Geometry in 8th grade. Moving forward in the 1516 school year, one of the adjustments that we'll be making is we will be grouping students really at the beginning of the year for acceleration in 6th grade. And traditionally, we have waited until about halfway through the year to group students. Now we'll be grouping students in 6th grade for acceleration, and in 6th grade, we'll be anticipating them covering the entirety of the 6th grade standards and half of the 7th grade standards in one year. And then ideally, those students would then move on in 7th grade to the remaining half of the 7th grade standards and the entirety of the 8th grade standards in 7th grade, and then take algebra as 8th graders. However, if students and families and parents wish to challenge this child's readiness to take algebra at the end of 6th grade, in other words, they would take algebra as a 7th grader, we will have that assessment in hand, we would administer that assessment to the students, and again, if there's a high level of proficiency, there'll be a conversation with Bay Trail Administration about how to best program for that student, which again might include scheduling them for algebra as a 7th grader, either if we have enough students, a section of Algebra 7, or scheduling them into 8th grade Algebra classes. And then we will be flexible and creative in how we will meet the students' needs as an 8th grader. But those will be conversations with parents as we have those come up. And that's really a quick summary of the adjustment as it stands now and how we're changing things.
That is a great summary, Jim. Board members, any questions or comments? Camilla?
Just to clarify, I didn't know Microsoft writes like, does they love it? There are. Oh. Hello. Just a clarifying question first. Is this a short-term decision while we catch up to the Common Core learning standards, or is this sort of the way it's going to be now?
I think we'll be monitoring it. What we know is that we cannot effectively program to cover three years of standards in a single year. So we'd have to really effectively teach 6th grade, 7th grade, and 8th grade, all in 6th grade, to prepare students to take algebra in 7th grade. And there's so much, the standards are now so succinct without the overlap that we saw in the previous set of standards, where we didn't have to teach three years worth, we could really cut it down quite a bit. So until our students, I think, start to demonstrate the aptitude for us to say we could move at that pace, this will be the solution. We'll continue to monitor it, I think, especially as we see, probably beginning with the 4th graders would be a class that we would want to look at, those are the first group of students who have to reach the level of college and career-ready, kind of keep track with them. But I think as we see students who have been taught to the level of the Common Core from the time they've come into school until they reach 7th grade, you know, they'll have a better, I think, propensity toward the potential for double acceleration again, but we'll watch it and monitor it and see if it makes sense to try it again with future groups of students. But right now, it's too much to cover in a single year for our kids.
All right, well, then I just want to, I want to thank you for being so transparent with the process and spending so much time with the parents, I know you're going to be spending more time with the parents, to really try to work to solve this problem and do what's best for the kids. And just, I think what you said, I wrote it down, that you may have to schedule a section, it might not be a full section, which makes me think about our general rule that if there aren't 15 kids, you have to get board approval.
Yes.
And I would say, please do come to us, because we know that this is something that our community wants, and we want our kids to be able to reach the really great math courses we have at the high school level. So just keep that in mind, that, you know, and thank, but thank you very much.
I appreciate that, but the real thanks goes to Mr. Buddington and Dr. Maloney and the math teachers at Bay Trail for really the painstaking work that they've put into it, and also Dr. Putnam, and conversations with him about, you know, there's impact on this at the high school as well. And he's been, he's been a great team player as well, and thinking about creative solutions to ensure the kids can still reach the highest level of mathematics that we offer in the district. So really, thanks to everybody involved in the process.
Any other questions or comments? No, Jim, I want to reiterate what Camilla said, I had the opportunity to attend the parent meeting with Mark Elitch here, and I think the turnout was great, the large, large number of parents who were there, you know, because obviously they cared about the decision. So thank you to you, to Mr. Buddington, and everyone else involved for taking that feedback into consideration and incorporating changes, and definitely double thank you for scheduling another parent meeting on June 19. It's one of the busiest times of the year, at the end of the year, you are making an effort rather than just sending a letter home. You know, that is really greatly appreciated. So I look forward to Thursday evening again.
All right. I'll be there.
Okay, Mark, what's your bus inspection and reserves?
Thank you, I just wanted to take a moment to celebrate a portion of Penfield's operations that we sometimes, I think, take for granted. Every school bus is mandated to be inspected twice per year, so it's a very rigorous inspection. Somewhat like the inspection that your car goes through, but much more thorough, and every bus must be inspected essentially every six months. So for us, for our fleet, that means there were 129 bus inspections during the, during the school year, during the 1314 year, 126 passed on first inspection, the remaining three passed on reinspection. So that first pass rate of 97, almost 98%, is well above DOT's goal of 90%. Their goal is 90%, and we're at 98%. So I think that's a tribute to the mechanics who work very hard, Mr. LaForte as the head mechanic, and also to the drivers who are careful with their equipment and report any problems that they see. So I'd just like to take this moment to say thank you to them. The next item on the, excuse me, on the special reports agenda has to do with an analysis of fund balance, I just want to make the public privy to what you have a much more thorough analysis of in your board report. So essentially, at year-end, we have a process whereby we take a look at our year-ending balances three times, once today before the end of the school year, once in August when we set the tax levy, and then if necessary, a follow-up time later in the school year. So although the books haven't been closed yet, and we've got at least two months' worth of work left to do, this is our analysis of where we end the year. And you see, beginning fund balances for both assigned and unassigned fund balance, our revenues and encumbrances through the year, and then uses of encumbrances and fund balance at year-end. It leaves us with approximately $4.2 million to, in terms of a decision to be made. The recommendation that you find, that is, that you have a much longer analysis of, essentially recommends that we maintain our unreserved or unassigned fund balance at the 4% that is allowed by law and suggested actually by the comptroller, that we appropriate $2 million to reduce taxes, that's what was contained in the budget. And of the remaining funds that we've used, approximately 2.3 to fund our capital reserve, there's about $6 million left to be funded in that reserve. There's a small adjustment to a $75,000 reserve for employee benefits. You've seen two previous presentations on the workers' compensation reserve, we recommend that we fund that, and that we replenish the retirement reserve. So essentially, what this means in terms of the overall picture of our reserves for the year, over the course of the last year, we've used approximately $5.2 million in terms of reserves. With this, we'd be replenishing about $1, $4 million, rather, so we would reduce our overall level of reserve balances by approximately $1 million. That's certainly not to be alarmed about, I think it's a good outcome for the district and a movement in overall use of reserves and reduction of those balances. So that is the recommendation that you have in your packet. Were there any questions? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Mark?
Just real quickly, for the retirement services, last two years of usage?
Yes, we've appropriated both last year, the previous year, and this year, funds from that retirement system reserve to help balance the budget, so this would replenish those amounts.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mark. And this concludes superintendent's reports. Board members, we are now on page three of your agenda, board business, facilities. The bid award, and this was hand-carried and should be in your packet. So item B, financial items, approval of general construction bids for Indian Landing Emergency Sewer Project. As you recall, we had bids that were determined to be over budget and were rejected at a board meeting on June 3, 2004, and then the project documents were revised and rebid. Bid opening for the revised project was held at 3:00 PM on June 11, 2014. Two contractors submitted bids, which are detailed on the attached spreadsheet that you have in front of you. May I have a motion, please, that construction contracts be awarded as they are listed in your agenda?
Second.
Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. What was that noise?
Balloon.
Okay. I'm sorry.
It's no longer with us.
Okay, you know what? I'm sorry, we're going on. Financial items, reserve funding. The Board of Education annually authorizes transfer to and from reserves, however, at June 30 years, only preliminary estimates of fund balance are available. Final figures are not available until the books are closed and the audit completed in the summer. As a result of this reality, the district employs the following multi-step procedure as listed in your agenda. At this time, may I have a motion, please? And the motion is on page six of your agenda, as it is written, and I'm sorry, I am not going to read all these numbers. Questions, comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed, thank you. Bosse Transportation Contracts, school year 2014-15, contract in the amount of $512,000 and $1,000 were received from the Bosse for transportation provided for Penfield students for the 2014-2015 school year. If the board approves, the following motion is in order. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education authorize the signature of the president to the contracts in the amount of $512,000 and $1,000 from the Board of Cooperative Educational Services covering transportation provided to Penfield students for the 2014-2015 school year. The dollar amount is an approximation only. The district will be billed for the actual number of students transported and aids used. Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed, thank you. Bosse's initial contract for services for the 2014-2015 school year. A contract in the amount of $7,174,183 has been received from the Board of Cooperative Educational Services covering services to be provided to Penfield students for the 2014-2015 school year. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education authorize the signature of the president to the contract in this amount from the, from Bosse's covering services to be provided to Penfield students for the 2014-2015 school year? The superintendent of schools is also authorized to amend the contract from time to time as additional services are requested or dropped. Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Policy review. We have policies that are here for a first reading, policy 5410 and 5411 and 5412 for purchasing policy, competitive bidding, and then 5411 is procurement of goods and services, and 5412, alternative formats for instructional materials. And these policies are here by recommendations from the business office. So, Mark, would you like to say a few words about them?
Thank you. Essentially what this, excuse me, essentially what this recommendation does is take our existing policy, add the new language that's required for piggybacking and for award, for best value, and then at BOSI's, at Erie BOSI's recommendation, splits it into three parts, simply because I think their feeling was it was getting too long and cumbersome to be one policy. So, it splits it into three different sections. It's not intended to change our practice. There's no, there's nothing, it requires that we do nothing different than what we do now, which complies with the law, but it allows us to participate in those newly-authorized piggyback contracts.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, any questions and comments at this time? Catherine?
Just some clarification on best value versus, I thought we had the obligation to go with the cheapest bid, but then there's the best value, so they're not always the same, right?
Exactly. And so, it allows us to consider best value in making bid awards. So, that's going to be a learning process for us as we move along.
All right.
Because particularly with regard to, you know, for professional contracts, in the past, the board has not had an obligation, as you know, to necessarily award to the lowest bidder. You're allowed to consider other factors, experience and so on. That was for professional contracts. Now, with best value, it extends that authority a little further. And for, for example, for service contracts, you might consider reputation, performance, and so on in the awarding of a bid.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. These policies are here for a first read, so they will be back in front of us, you know, will be on the website. If anybody has any comments, I would like to check them before we approve them. Second read is 5655, energy policy. Do we have anything about it, Mark?
Changes based, we have made changes based on the comments that we received at the previous board meeting. There were no other comments.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? All right. Thank you. Professional development plan approval. May I have a motion, please, that the professional development plan be approved as presented on May 27th, 2014, for the 2014-2015 school year? Questions or comments? Mark? No? Okay. All right. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you.
I appreciate it as eager, Mr. Board.
I'm sorry?
I appreciate it as eager, Mr. Board.
Yes. All right. Certification of lead principal evaluators. Be resolved that Dr. Steve Grimm and Patricia Gallagher are hereby certified as qualified lead evaluators of principals, having successfully completed the training requirements as prescribed by law and as listed in your agenda. So, may I have a motion, please, that this be approved?
Seven.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Certification of lead teacher evaluators. Be resolved, please, that James Pfeifer, Don Davis, Terry Haynes, Scott Herschler, Mark Nelson, Wynton Buddington, and Tom Putnam are hereby certified as qualified lead evaluators of teachers, having successfully completed the training requirements as prescribed by law, and this includes the list that is also in your agenda. So, may I have a motion, please, that this be approved?
Seven.
Questions and comments? Yes, Barb?
Shouldn't it say Terry Davis? Terry Haynes?
I'm sorry. You're right. We'll fight it in a minute.
All right. Thank you, Barb. All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Donations. Dynavox Communication System donation. Mister and Misses Stephen Syme have donated the Dynavox Communication System valued at approximately $1,500 to the Penfield School District. A Dynavox is a high-tech communication instrument that helps individuals living with speech, language, and learning disabilities communicate. This is a very generous and welcome gift. On behalf of the students, speech-language teacher, and district, we wish to express our appreciation to the Syme family. Arts in education donation. Donations totaling $3,891 for items in the 2013-2014 budget have been granted to the district for the purpose of arts in education at Scribner Elementary PTA. So, at this time, may I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $3,891 to the 2013-2014 budget? As shown above, the amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items, and express its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield schools. Questions or comments? All those in, oh, Barb, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to confirm that the Dynavox, this is going to be a very valuable piece of equipment for the students here in Penfield. Having been working with the Syme family, that's very generous of them, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Barb. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. President's remarks. I just want, may I want to thank those of you who responded to Marsha, that you will be attending our New York State School Board. Also, thank you for all the numerous outings you've had in the past month or so, attending student functions and just about, you know, every evening that was in the district between honors convocation and concerts and all of that. So, thank you very much for that. But that's about it. Unfinished business, we have none at this time. Under new business, you have a listing of all of your committee assignments, and, you know, if you could give that some thoughts, and then, you know, we can talk about it more at the organizational meeting in July, which committee you are interested in. Right now, the only listing that you have would be for facilities, because we just appointed those two board members, Catherine Dean and Mark Elitch. But pretty much everything else is open at this time, so, you know, unless, you know, I hear otherwise from one of you, who knows that they're staying on the committee for next year already, so. And I think, yes?
This time, you put PAB presidents as a liaison. In the past, we've rotated that, just like we rotate through the, so is that, that's, did I miss that?
And I think we took it off last year, but then it came back, so, yes, definitely.
That's fine.
No, we're still rotating this.
Rotating that one, so it won't be one person. Okay.
Yeah. All right. And there being no further business, may I have a motion, please, that the meeting be adjourned at 9:04 PM? Questions, comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you.